Pennington County Commission Meeting to order. Pennington County Commission Meeting for November 19th will be called to order. We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge led by Alexa White. Thank you. The next item is the review and approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second? Do we have a second? Motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hines, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today, the consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the meeting of November 5th, 2013. Approval of vouchers in the amount of $5,753,229.23. Approval of the chairman's signature on the letter regarding payment in lieu of taxes funding. Approval of the general fund budgeted operating transfer to the road and bridge fund in the amount of $1,103,377.50 submitted by the auditor's office. To schedule a public hearing on December 3rd, 2013 for the year-end general fund supplements as presented by the auditor's office. To schedule a public hearing on December 3rd, 2013 for the year-end capital project budget supplements as presented by the auditor's office. And finally, the approval of the 2014 state and local agreement with the state of South Dakota as submitted by emergency management.
Thank you. Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the Rapid City Public Library Liaison Update. Dr. Vera Cowell.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, I'd like to report that we, I think you all know already, that we selected a new library director, Mr. James McShane from Connecticut. And he's been in libraries in New York and Kansas City and has been a director for a while, and we're very excited and delighted that he's accepted our offer. So he starts the last week of January. So he's already getting up to speed on some issues, and so we're excited about that. The second big news is that the library board of directors voted to give the Pennington County liaison a vote, which is great. That's long overdue, and that's, so I got to vote for the director starting last month. So that's progress and improvement. And you all have the quarterly report before you. Really, nothing new or dramatic there. Just consistently, the use of electronic materials tends to keep going up, and print materials are going down. But at the current time for this quarter, the Pennington County borrowers represent about 17% of the total cardholders at the library, and that seems to be pretty consistent over the last year or so. So that will be something to consider as the new budget issues come up. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair, I just would have a comment. I really am pleased that you are going to be a voting member. I think that that has been appropriate for a long time, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to have you do that as part of representing the county. And I just want to thank the county board. Rod Pettigrew is out there as chairman of the board, and I just really want to thank you for that.
Rod was really instrumental in getting this through. And so, yes, it is long overdue, and it's appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. The next items are scheduled for 9:15. I don't see, oh yeah, KJ, you're here. We could, you could just kind of visit with us and tell us your life story until 9:15.
I worked for Pennington County how many years?
I'm enough on 29, so.
Well, if you talk real slow and we don't get any motions before 9:15, we'll be great.
I might suggest to the board that we then first address Item D, which is the general fund contingency budget and assigned reserves document. I wanted the board to have this not only for the request for the reserve in 2013 from the auditor's office for the Springbrook project that is moving along a little slower but progressing well, that we'll request that those funds just be assigned to reserve for the end of this year, and we'll be supplementing as we complete the install of all the different programs from Springbrook. But also, I just, for your information, included what we currently have in all of the general fund, assigned fund balances. So I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at that. This will, of course, be good information that we'll be using at the December 3rd meeting when we address all these supplements. And at the December 3rd meeting, we'll also be, we're gathering the information and bringing the necessary supplements and information on where we're at with Storm Atlas. And of course, there will be a certain amount of those monies that won't be covered by the funding from the federal government and the state. The reference I've heard is generally those costs are expected to be covered at about 85%. So we'll talk about that other 15%. And so, that was information I wanted you to have now as we move into these final motions for the year. Any questions on the reserves? And then maybe I'll jump back and just request that motion for the contingency reserve and answer any questions the board might have on that.
KJ, do they have any idea when Springbrook will be done? I mean, I know it's so hard to tell.
Procedurely, we have spent the last two weeks testing the payroll and spent most of October just moving all of the payroll information in. And, you know, there's that period of time, and we're still there, where everything that was done in the live payroll program, from an address change to a new employee or anything like that, now has to be updated in Springbrook. We, you know, brought a lot of that information in through conversion, but you've reached this point. And we're freezing the payroll file on the 1st of January. I think we've got all the new hires in and have asked the departments to, you know, change your address in January and those kinds of things, so that we can get that file out to the new Wellmark people and the new Flex people. So it's been, you know, the incorporation of the payroll in Springbrook has been a huge part, and we've had the changes with the healthcare trust. So they all need that information back out. It's going along pretty well. But we're planning on going live with payroll in Springbrook, January 1st. And then we'll incorporate steps into the use of the time card program by the middle of the year. And so I anticipate, you know, a huge amount of the training will be done by June. Our finance is up. We're working on capital assets and some of those that are a little less, you know, they're the smaller portions. But the payroll's been huge. We lost our original trainer who came in November of 2012 with us, and her last day with Springbrook was the 31st of October. So we had to do a little catch-up on that, but it went really well. The last two weeks were kind of grueling, especially for Cindy and I. But I think it's gonna, it's gonna flow nicely once we all get used to the change.
What is the catastrophic HC reserve? I should probably know that.
It's the reserve that Karen Romi has for their economic assistance budget. And basically, you know, many years ago, you might remember, Ron, the county participated in the statewide catastrophic fund for, and we removed ourselves from that and established our own reserve. And she funds that at the end of the year-ish, if she has unspent budget and adds to it. And, you know, if we ever had one of those years where just terrible, terrible, non-covered amount of medical costs, and oftentimes it's on one individual, we could supplement.
So this year, I take it wasn't too bad, as long as there's no requests?
That's right.
Okay, we're ready for the Item A.
Before we move to Item A, I would then ask if the motion could be made to assign the $100,000 of contingency for the Springbrook project in the 2013 budget be, assigned general fund software reserve for a 2014 supplement when those expenses will actually occur.
I will make that motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions relative to the motion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item A.
Item A is the general fund supplement hearing for $15,000 to the John T. Vakarovich budget. This has been an ongoing budget that receives funds from the foundation. Karen Romi is the manager of this budget, and the timing never seems to coordinate with the approval of the budget, and you can never assume that you're going to get it from year to year as the foundation moves to various projects. So we have received $15,000. They will spend some of that in this year. I'm not certain how much, any amount remaining at the end of the 2013 budget. We will come back and request that that be supplemented for 2014.
Any questions? Comments?
Make a motion and schedule the hearing at 9:15 Tuesday, November, oh, that's today.
That's today. We're here.
Okay, so you're ready for the one to approve the supplement?
We're ready to approve the supplement, yes.
My motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any public comment relative to this motion? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Item B is a supplement request from the general fund director of equalization and sheriff's office. $7,337 to equalization, $79,000 to the sheriff's budget for vehicle repairs. We've received insurance proceeds from two hailstorms this summer that significantly damaged vehicles in the sheriff's department. And DOE also weeded, but they didn't have things settled on that. So that's why that one over there is scheduled for the next meeting. We've already received the insurance proceeds and now need to supplement these into their respective budgets so they can repair their vehicles.
Are we actually going to repair the vehicles?
I believe, I know that Shannon indicated he's had his schedule. Sheriff Tom.
Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff, and, you know, I think most of them have been fixed or in the process of being fixed, and it'll be about a wash within a few thousand dollars of what the damages were.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the supplement request to the general fund, DOE, $7337, and sheriff, $79,000 in budgets for a total of $86,337 from non-budgeted revenue for insurance proceeds received in the current year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this motion? Any further comment? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
Item C is the last posted hearing for a general fund supplement to the search and rescue budget in the amount of $5,956. This is non-budgeted revenue that was received through the South Dakota Wildland Fire Services and was not originally in the budget, and will cover those expenses.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. KJ, can you tell me, what expenses do they have that was not covered by the original budget? Sheriff Tom.
The, if you remember, we did this last year, too. We've come back and asked for a supplement because they loaned some equipment out for wildland fire and went through this process. Next year, we actually built it into the budget, so hopefully we won't have to do it unless they collect more than we anticipated. But it'll be for some unanticipated repairs, and then we have some new members, and they're going to finish outfitting them with what they call their bunker gear, the gear they wear when they respond to like a crash scene. So the new members will be 100% outfitted. And then we're picking up some extra parts for the snowcat that we used in the last blizzard we had. The reimbursement for FEMA will pay for any repairs that were a result of damage done to the snowcats during the blizzard, but they won't pay for some extra parts on the shelves to have. So this will allow us to kind of stock our shelves of some parts that typically break on us.
Any further questions?
Is there something in here to put the back door back on?
It's probably in there somewhere.
The only reason I know about that is that you rescued my brother off the north side of the interstate, and he said on the way back to his motel, the door fell off.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve the supplement to the general fund search and rescue budget for a total of $5,956 from non-budgeted revenue received in the current year.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or public comment on this motion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, KJ. Okay. Next item is emergency management.
Good morning, Chairman Peterson, Commission. Dustin Willett, the Director of Emergency Management. Last commission meeting, an item was brought before you on behalf of emergency management regarding the carcass disposal pits that we had dug. And we were looking to close those pits through an action of the board. And the board made the decision to go ahead and close the pits on a given date or as soon as possible around that date. The issue is, the next week, multiple extenuating circumstances became evident to our office. We received several phone calls. It appears that there were quite a few producers, individual producers, that couldn't or were unable or unwilling to get out into their fields because the ground had been so wet and so soft that they just couldn't get to the carcasses. So as the ground began to freeze and get harder, that's allowing producers to get at carcasses that they weren't able to get at before, and they needed a place to put them. So we received several requests through commissioners if those pits could be left open a little longer for those producers. We also had some legal issues that were being worked out between the, with the help of the sheriff's office and the state's attorney in regard to some other carcass disposal problems. And I received a phone call, my office received a phone call from Jay Alderman with state's attorney's office, again, saying that they were very close to an agreement and a deal, but they needed a place to put them. And so the state's attorney requested through my office that those pits remain open. And then the third circumstance that was brought to my attention was, normally, there's a very tight timeframe for producers to deal with dead carcasses. And obviously, the scope or the extent of this disaster necessitated an extension of that normal timeline. And so the governor's office with, or in conjunction with several other state agencies, extended the deadline that producers had to deal with their carcasses. And that line in the sand that the state drew through the governor's office was November 30th, so the end of this month. So I also fielded, my office also fielded calls from the state animal industry board asking if we could keep the pits open longer for the producers to meet that deadline from the state. So between those three kind of separate but all related extenuating circumstances, I made the decision to keep those pits open through the last week of November and then come before you today and ask that the commission take that decision into consideration and either voice your support or whatever the will of the commission may be. So I wanted to come before you and tell you why those pits weren't closed and explain my reasoning and offer that up to you for any type of action that you deem necessary.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the request to keep the burial pits for the critters from the Atlas storm until November 29th or there soon thereafter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Dustin, for that comprehensive update. With the motion and the second, do we have a vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
If I might, while we still have Dustin and Alexa both here, so we can do this in public. We did it yesterday, just kind of in the office and had a little chat. But I really appreciate what you folks did during that storm. And between you, law enforcement, emergency management, and search and rescue, everybody did a yeoman's job, and I don't think anybody can complain. And our electric companies, and I believe the stuff went way above and beyond where they needed to be to get electricity back on as soon as they possibly could. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. It certainly was one team, one fight, and everybody did sever. So thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Item 15 from the Highway Department.
Good morning, Heiny Jungy, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. We opened bids for the new Underwood shop, for a new shop in New Underwood. We received seven bids. The highest bid was $772,000, down to a low bid of $605,400. And we're going to recommend awarding the bid to the low bidder, Iverson Construction, Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount of $605,400. Now, before you do the motion, I just want to, I have some good news and unexpected news. I only had $280,000 budgeted for the New Underwood shop.
That's how we were.
So the bids came in a little bit higher, but on the other, the flip side of that is that when we, earlier this year, when I set up the 2013 budget, we were going to do the Reservoir Road project and the Plateau Lane project. I had estimated those in my budget for 3.9 million. And the actual bids, Plateau Lane came in at 1.1 and Reservoir Road came in at 1.4. So I'll have $1,200,000 unspent in this year's budget because just those two projects came in way under our estimates. So even though I only budgeted $280,000, I could take $325,000 of those unspent funds and we would still have $800,000 left over. And my intent is, is to take that portion of that, that $500,000, and put that towards the new shop building. I'll put that in reserves for a new building at the highway shop. So the budget numbers are there. It's supported. We can afford it, and we can pay for it. I would just be coming back after probably the building gets constructed next year and ask for that supplement into the 14 budget because none of it's going to be spent in this year's budget. So the money's there, and we can afford it, so.
Just out of curiosity, what made it like, well, pretty much double what we originally thought?
Well, I based my estimate on the new wall building we had put up about 10 years ago. That was a pole building design. And this year, the building committee wanted it designed by an architectural firm, and this is a steel-supported beam-type building, a steel building. So the cost on that, that drove the cost up. Plus, the soils over there are expansive soils. The footing's got to be a lot deeper. And then they, we did a soils investigation, and they came back with a recommendation that we need to have at least three foot of engineered fill underneath the floor. And then, instead of doing asphalt around the edge of the building for an apron with the expansive soils, they recommended a concrete, 12-foot-wide concrete apron around the building to keep any moistures from getting into that subgrade. So all that kind of led to increasing the cost. Plus, 10 years ago, my estimate was off. The building prices 10 years ago more than doubled, and I only had like a 30% add-on on there. So my estimate should have been up to that $500,000 or better. So that was a mistake on my part. And I reflected that in the Plateau Lane and Reservoir Lane, and then those numbers came way under what I anticipated. So it was, that was a good thing. The funding is there, so.
And then I have another question. You said you probably have about $800,000, and that would be left after building this building? Why wouldn't you put $800,000 into a reserve for the building out there rather than $500?
I like to hedge my funds a little bit. There might be something else unexpected that comes up, and we're probably, we're going to have to find 15% or the 10% match for our emergency response this year. And so there's a few other little things in there, so I didn't want to offer it all up.
Yeah, I get that.
Is why I used the $500,000 number.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be voting no. I still think we should wait. Not that we don't need a shop, but we have lots of expenses. We've got a contract for picking up trees along the roads, and we have a lot of other expenses that, just because we have the money, and we don't have the money, the taxpayers have the money, doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to award the New Underwood shop construction to Iverson Construction, Inc., Rapid City, South Dakota.
They're out of Sturgis. There's typo on the cover page. I just noticed that on the bid document.
Okay, Sturgis, South Dakota.
Sturgis, South Dakota, yes.
In the amount of 605,400.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to vote for this, but I'm not necessarily totally for it right now with the, after the storm and things, and some of the expenses and things that we may have. But I think it's well-needed down there to get our shop out of downtown New Underwood, and especially our salt and sand business and all of that to get it away from the area.
Further comments? Not, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Dravman?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Heiny. Next item is item 16 in the executive session. Do we have a motion?
I move to go into executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is for personnel, is that correct?
Yes. Motion carried. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Have a motion and a second to come out of the executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is item 17, the analysis of the recreational use of Spring Creek.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Water Protection Coordinator. I'm going to present to you some information that was released by the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources regarding the analysis of Spring Creek that was done this summer. The purpose of it essentially is, I'm requesting that we make comments to this analysis and provide a letter with the commission's approval to the state, so I wanted to at least give some background information on it first. So essentially, this was done by a citizen request, because of a citizen request, essentially. So the state came out in June of this year and did what they call a use attainability analysis. And basically, what that is, is what a stream can support. Is it swimming, fishing, boating, fish propagation, things like that? That's, in so many terms, what that means. So the beneficial uses that are currently on Spring Creek are immersion recreation or swimming and wading, essentially. Limited contact recreation, which would be considered maybe boating, fishing, and then cold water permanent fish life propagation, which we consider trout reproduction. So in the spring, or, excuse me, in the summer of 2013, DENR came out and they analyzed the portion of Spring Creek from the headwaters at Medicine Mountain downstream to Sheridan Lake. They visited several of our monitoring sites that we use for the Spring Creek project. So here is Medicine Mountain, here, and it travels down. We had a sample site here, that's 25. Here's 50, that was a sample site also, and that's at Spring Creek Road West. Then it goes down through to Sheridan Lake. And because of this assessment, the DENR made three recommendations for Spring Creek. The first recommendation was that they add Lake Alexander and add beneficial uses to Lake Alexander. And Lake Alexander is located approximately here in Medicine Mountain. And basically, what that does is it just gives them criteria for that lake. And at this time, Game Fish and Parks is actually managing that lake for immersion recreation or swimming and fishing. So they're just basically listing that to protect it. So in the event that something would happen, they could protect it. But it's not going to cause them to have to monitor or have any restrictions on that. The second recommendation was that they remove immersion recreation or swimming from this portion of Spring Creek. That's Medicine Mountain to essentially Spring Creek Road West. And the third recommendation was that they maintain the immersion recreation and limited contact on this segment of the stream. So if you look, this is that top site, SPC 25. This is the one that they did remove the immersion recreation or swimming use, yes. You can see it's somewhat obvious that that was probably legitimate. Here's a picture of Lake Alexander. You can see, obviously, they fish and swim. And here's the creek at Spring Creek Road West. And these pictures are taken directly out of the use attainability analysis that DENR did. So these are DENR's pictures. And then this is at Site 100, or what we call 100, which is at Highway 87 there where the Mickelson runs, the Mickelson run, oops, essentially along here. And then this is at Tracy Park, and right here is, this is Hill City property. Tracy Park is right here. And that one is just downstream in the wastewater treatment plant for Hill City and across the street from the Hill City Visitor Center. And then this is the site that's upstream of Sheridan Lake. So again, here are DENR's three recommendations. So basically, what do the recommendations mean? Essentially, it'll mean that Spring Creek will remain impaired for fecal coliform from Spring Creek Road West to Sheridan Lake, and the beneficial use of swimming essentially will still apply. And in the instance that DENR would have determined that Spring Creek did not meet the criteria for immersion recreation and removed its beneficial use, it may have no longer needed or met the criteria for impairment. So this is kind of a segue for the Spring Creek project. DENR's recommendation is consistent with the Spring Creek project. Our water quality data results collected from 2010 to 2012 did result in us discontinuing monitoring at those upper sites anyway. And our advisory group and the county did adjust our monitoring program to reflect that. So the DENR is providing a public participation process in this UAA. And staff has put together some recommendations for comments that we feel essentially is warranted, and we're asking for the commission's approval on the letter. So I guess my first thing is, do you have any questions on the use attainability analysis? I tried to make it somewhat brief, and I apologize. I didn't want to get too technical.
Mr. Chair, you have a question. You know, on, I'll show you this picture, but the one where it's so very narrow on the upper portion of that. You know, you look at the way that the growth of the grasses and all of that have grown in, and one of the things you've shown us before is how, working with the banks along the creek and everything to preserve the flow of the water in the lower part of the project, is that something that's going to ever be done here? Because it looks like it's just going to eventually just grow in together, or are we actually doing anything with this part of it? As far as your riparian and all of that?
Right now, we are not. It's not a high priority area. When we did sample or monitor it in 2011 and '12, we didn't see a whole lot of exceedances in that area. However, on this part of the creek, you can't see it from a picture unless you're physically out there, but this is undercut pretty good. So the creek is actually wider than it appears. The, I mean, if you stood on here for any length of time, there is, I mean, you could...
Fall in.
Fall in, sure. But it is undercut there.
Okay.
Pretty good. But as far as the DENR's analysis of this, they have specific criteria. They actually have a manual and a criteria that they go through, and this just didn't meet that criteria.
Okay.
So.
Brittany, where will the, where's Spring Creek Road at? You said from Spring Creek Road West to Sheridan Lake.
Sure. It's right here, essentially. Here's the Custer County line.
So it's going to be right there at the, where it crosses that highway?
Right. You know, the Mickelson kind of comes through here and over. It's in that area or right after that. There's a little Game Fish and Parks area here. When you turn off the road, there's a little area that's owned by Game Fish and Parks that they allow for like fishing and things in there. But that, this is kind of a, just a gravel road. A lot of this is Forest Service land.
So Brittany, you have this draft letter for the board's approval, is that my understanding?
Right. And essentially, the, this letter, a lot of these comments are clarifications. When we did talk with DENR, you know, and they did request the data, the Spring Creek project data, and they did utilize that data for this assessment, there were some clarifications on, you know, what years, what type of sampling, because we have changed, you know, types of sampling over the years. We went to ambient, we did some storms. So just to break that out and clarify, the School of Mines did help with monitoring in the beginning, so that wasn't in there. There was some clarifications as far as, you know, on Page 7, whether the storm event results were included in the exceedances. You know, from our perspective, you know, that makes a difference in the data. So just to clarify that, we felt that that would be important in that assessment. And then, you know, as far as the recommendations, the project, we feel, you know, has kind of followed, you know, what it had said. We've already taken into consideration that this is somewhat of a low priority in our ranking sheets, you know. When we look at BMPs, the BMPs that get the higher rankings are usually through this stretch. Our data has shown that. So that's why in 2013, we had recommended to drop these two sites and not, and start sampling at this site, which is right there at Highway 87. So.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Are you taking public comments or just board comments?
Go ahead.
Is there any way that we, the public?
You are.
I'm George Farabee, and I was the citizen that requested the use attainability analysis. And I'm preparing a letter for, to send to Secretary Perner, thanking him for being that prompt in doing the attainability analysis. There's several things I'd like to point out that probably should be ironed out before a letter goes forward. The recommendations were to remove immersion recreation parameter or standard from the upper portion to Sheridan Lake. Nothing said about the tributaries. I think before you folks, the board comments, you should probably ask the question, and if you want me to, I'll ask the question, what about the tributaries to Spring Creek? The reason I ask that is, we have projects, at least there's one project that's been approved, not by you folks yet, but on Newton Fork, which is a tributary of Spring Creek. If the standard is immersion recreation versus limited contact or vice versa, if Newton Fork's limited contact, then that project on Newton Fork should go away. But that's one of many tributaries. Additionally, there's nothing in here about Sheridan Lake. Now, I don't think anybody would disagree that Sheridan Lake, at least the swimming hole, should be immersion recreation capable. The question should be resolved. Brittany said that the recommendation is consistent with the implementation project. Well, I would disagree for the reasons I pointed out, that it doesn't include the And Sheridan Lake is not included in the recommendation. The Spring Creek project includes the entire watershed. DNR is talking one watershed. The Spring Creek Advisory Group implementation project is talking another watershed. As you folks recall, about six months ago, a year ago, we asked for the boundaries to be defined. We got to run around, West Dakota got to run around. As I understand it, it's still run around where the exact boundaries of the project One last comment. You look at those pictures that DNR, that this young gal from DENR took. I can't imagine man doing a much better job of protecting the environment than nature's done. With the rocks, the rocks and in that creek, there's some muddy spots, I understand, but nothing compared to the rest of South Dakota. The grass, the filtering grass, man can't do that. So why would we want to go disturb that and spend a lot of tens, hundreds of thousands of bucks just to make something look prettier? It can't get much prettier to those of us that live on the land than what you saw in those pictures. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would I be able to ask Mr. Farabee a few questions?
Sure.
So, George, if we ask for these tributaries to be brought into the project, would that cost more money?
Absolutely.
And was, is your argument against the project that it costs too much money already?
Apparently, you didn't understand what I said. DNR...
Can you please answer my question? Has that been your argument?
The entire project...
Has that been your argument? That it costs too much money, that this project is a waste of taxpayer money?
Yes.
And so now, what you would like us to do is request that bring the tributaries and Sheridan Lake into the process and spend more money?
Absolutely not what I said. What I said is we need to...
You requested, you felt that our comments should be, that we should...
We need to clarify. Your employee said that it's consistent with DNR recommendation.
No, I'm asking you, just a few minutes ago, did you say that it wasn't correct for us to send a letter in without saying that Sheridan Lake and the tributaries should be included in this study?
I merely asked that be clarified before the board responds to DNR.
So what do we clarify? Because what, how can we bring that in?
The young gal that did this report, I'm sure that she'd be happy to respond...
Would you please ask, answer my question?
Since I don't understand your question, I can't answer it.
Huh. What a shame that you don't.
My point was that they're looking at one, that one, a particular issue as the watershed, and your folks, the Spring Creek Advisory Group, is looking at a different watershed. So all I'm saying is, let's look at the same watershed.
So are you saying that the DENR, when they conducted their study last summer, did not do what you asked them to do? You were the one who specified what you wanted them to do. You're the one who requested it. So are you saying that they didn't? And now, because my assumption would be that you wanted to make sure that what is happening in 319 is correct. Am I off-base there?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, the reason for my point was, there's a project on Newton Fork, which is a tributary of Spring Creek. It's been approved by your Spring Creek Advisor Group. If the standard or the parameter is changed for Newton Fork, from immersion recreation to limited contact, that project goes away. It can't get more simple than that. The Newton Fork project no longer has a reason to be approved by this board. It's on hold right now, the Newton Fork project. Okay? So since DNR is... So since DNR is only talking about Spring Creek proper and no tributaries, that issue should be clarified. It should be clarified because I said there's a project on the books for your approval. So why should we spend, this is a mound system, by the way, why should we spend 15, 20,000 bucks on Newton Fork? Which is not impaired, according to DNR, is not impaired. Does that answer your question, Nancy? Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Brittany, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but as we're coming down Spring Creek, we're testing from, put your marker up, from which location to which location?
Starting in 2010, we did start here and sampled down Sheridan Lake. In 2011 and '12, we sampled this site down.
What site was that?
The 25. And then in 2013, this area, we just didn't see a whole lot of exceedances. We didn't, like I said, see some of the issues, so we, in order to be reasonable.
So between those two points where we did the testing, it would be my understanding that if there's a tributary up there that has some problem, that is running in the Spring Creek, and we're sampling below and above those tributaries coming in, am I correct in that statement?
Correct. And actually, I can answer that question. In the administrative rules, it is 7451-0104. It just says application of criteria into contiguous water. So these segments and tributaries cannot cause the main segment to exceed its criteria. It is stated in that administrative rule.
Thank you, that's where I was headed. And the last thing that I would say is probably the reason that Sheridan Lake is not there is because of the EPA and the DNR and most everybody else has cleanliness by dilution.
Well, actually Sheridan Lake is already listed under the same, under 7451.
To the face of the dam at Sheridan Lake, correct?
Well, Sheridan Lake is listed under 7451-0254, the one that Lake Alexander just got assigned to. So it is protected under that classification for immersion recreation already. So when the state looks at these, they assume that the highest standard, in order for them not to have the highest standard, they have to prove that it's not. So in order for them, for this, they had to actually go in and show that it was not swimable to remove that classification. This still has to, this segment still, for this to get approved to remove it, it still has to go through an internal review, to the Board of Water and Natural Resources, a legislative review, and then to the EPA. Anytime you remove a classification from a stream, it has to go to EPA's approval. Otherwise, if they want to assume that and reclassify it as a higher standard, typically it does not. And normally, they don't do these UAAs on immersion recreation, because under the Clean Water Act, they assume fishable and swimable and they do the highest use, which would be the immersion recreation, essentially. So in order for, when they went through and did all of this and for the tributaries, the tributaries already have a limited contact use on them. So say Palmer Creek or Newton Fork, they still can't have pollutants greater that would cause where it comes in to exceed its criteria.
Do you know, Brittany, do you know what the request was for, for the study? Do you know what was requested of them? Was it, do we have a copy of the letter that was, that they generated this report from?
They did, I think they did put that request letter on the website. So where they, if you go to.
We have the website up here, so.
April 7.
She had a copy of it here, so.
And in addition, when I spoke with DNR, they are doing assessments on over 400 of the limited contact segments in the whole state. It's just an enormous task and it's going to take some time, but they are doing that.
Commissioner Holloway, did you have?
I don't have anything.
One more comment, and then we're gonna close this out, because it strikes me that the discussion and your concerns are better directed at the state level, not here. But go ahead.
I have a couple of comments about, about the tributaries, but before, comment on that, I have a copy, not with me, a copy of the letter, I'll get to you, Don, that I wrote to Secretary Perner.
I just, I think we have.
Okay. Anyway. Two comments on the tributaries. I don't know the exact name of the tributary, but a couple of years ago, we were very, very close to spending about 27,000 bucks, a combination of repair and projects and septics. About halfway up that area from the Highway 80, or Highway 16 up to, up to Boy Scout Camp, guy named Jim Skoll, he withdrew his application. But we were fixing to give him $27,000 of taxpayer money for seeding grass and fencing and water tanks and septic. The other tributary is Newton Fork. Newton Fork is not impaired. But because, because the Spring Creek Advisory Group or the consultant considers it as part of the watershed, since it's part of the watershed, then it qualifies for grants, handouts. Need to clarify, are the tributaries now off of DNR's impaired list or not? See, there's one of the four projects that's pending, that's pending before you folks, is a mound system, septic project on Newton Fork, which is not impaired. But because it connects just before Newton Fork gets to Hill City, yeah, it's where it connects to Spring Creek, so we're gonna spend 15, 20,000 bucks potentially. Should be clarified. Thank you much.
Okay. We have a question before us as to whether or not you authorized the chair's signature to the letter. Is that correct?
Yes.
What's your wish?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we authorize your signature on the letter presented by Brittany to, to make comments on the analysis of the recreation use of Spring Creek.
Do we have a second? Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item 18. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to go into a board of adjustment.
Motion in a second to convene as a board of adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 18A. Are you in charge? This is a variance.
Uh, we gotta, we gotta wait a few minutes. We gotta wait until 10:30 to.
Do you have a five-minute recess motion? Let's see.
Second.
Since we're ahead of schedule by three minutes.
You just had a motion to take a five-minute recess. You had a second. Yeah.
Do you have a second?
You did have, yep.
Motion in a second to take a five-minute recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Item 18A.
Morning, Dan Genison, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request, 1314, J.C. and Peggy Palmer, Aspen Ridge as the agent. This is to reduce the minimum required section line setback from 58 feet to 50 feet in a planned unit development district. If the board approves this variance, we'd recommend that four conditions be included. This is located at 5525 Metal Arc Drive, approximately 300 feet south of the intersection of Prestwick Road and Metal Arc Drive in Countryside, just north of Sheridan Lake Road. Involves a .69 acre property. There's, this is to construct a pergola on the property that will encroach into the section line setback. As you can see right there's the section line, the 58-foot setback and the pergola that they were requesting to build right here. It encroaches from here forward. This is a section line that is actually inside, or right at this point, it's actually in city limits. They actually have a access road to a water tower on here, so it is not, I don't believe even available to be vacated, because it currently is being used for a road. They also wanted, after reviewing this, we noticed there is a note on the plat that says there's also a 25-foot setback to the right-of-way prior to us being able to issue a building permit for this. If the variance is granted, they would also need to vacate that note off the plat, and that would have to be done through the city of Rapid City. That is one of the conditions that is added on here. There was an issue with what we saw on a site plant, or a site visit of some decks that appeared to be on, within that right-of-way. That is on an adjacent property. I confirmed that with the owner this morning. It is not on this lot, so it is irrelevant at this time. So staff has indicated that if you approve this, we'd recommend those four conditions be attached.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Dan, we, we've not received anything from Rapid City since the, they're using that road and, I mean, I think, thought that was kinda unusual, that we wouldn't.
Yeah, at this time, we have not received any comments.
Can we?
We always wrote it to them. We give them every opportunity to respond. I don't know if they just missed this or what, I don't know.
I mean, they're, they're involved in this by, so if, if we make a decision today and we don't, and then it's not what, I mean, their comments can make a difference in what our decision should have been. I, I'm kinda concerned about that.
Dan, do you know what the comprehensive plan calls for that, that section line, right, the city's comprehensive plan for that area out there?
I am not aware of that at this time. I know there's currently a road there. This is private property. This is into the setback, but not into the right-of-way. So it's just into the setback. But I'm not aware of what their comprehensive plan is in regards to this road. Lizanne is actually, do you, are you aware of the Rapid City having any comments on this? Because the staff, at the time the staff report was written, there was no comments received.
Yeah, I never received any comments from the city on this one.
Well, Lizanne, just to clarify that, I guess I had a concern about that, because I, I hate to make a decision today and, and not have something from them, because they are definitely a part of this. I mean, if we make a decision that conflicts with what they're doing, I, I'm concerned about that, being that's within those limits.
Sure, and that's understandable. And I don't know, Dan, I think you routed this out and the responses were to go to your email. So I didn't see anything when I wrote the staff report. Generally, when we get comments back from the city, it generally just pertains to major street plans and what they foresee the use of the property being. They typically don't have grave concerns with setback requests, but I understand, I was concerned too when I wrote the report, but I didn't, didn't have comments when I wrote it. So I, I think I put that in there, that I didn't have comments, but I, I understand your concern and certainly they could be contacted for comments.
Yes. I see one of our zoning ordinance requirements, our specific criteria, is that due to this particular circumstance, the unwarranted hardship. I'd like to know what the unwarranted hardship is, that you can't build a pergola.
Why cannot? Well, it is.
What the unwarranted hardship is, if we don't allow it?
If you don't allow it? We're not aware of any hardship that would warrant granting a variance in this case.
Any other comments or questions?
The applicant is here, if he would like to address any questions towards him.
I think that would be useful.
Thank you. Good morning, Chris Palmer, how are you?
Good morning.
If I may, addressing your questions first, there is a road back there, but if you go to the, that road runs from Prestwick. It's, it's locked off at one end and it only goes to the water tank.
And actually, I just lived down the road from you years back, so I do.
Okay, all right. So, you know, I don't know, I mean, we've given notice twice now and trying to get this done if we can. And the road, you know, it has a, city truck goes down it Monday morning, every morning, and that's all that happens. They go down, check the water tank, and they go back. I think that Bob Borgmeyer has vacated the other part of the section line. In fact, we thought when the Red Rocks thing went on, we went together with the Red Rocks guys, because we bought the two lots next to us. We went with the Red Rocks guys and with Borgmeyer to vacate the whole thing. Apparently, it didn't get done. But addressing Ron's issue, Ron, what we've done is we're trying to create a sunbreak over our patio. There's four stone columns that'll have some white pillars and redwood running this way and redwood running this way. Aesthetically, it would be nice to have that to break the sun on a west-facing patio. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Understand. Any other questions? Well, I, I just, we, we're sure that we've notified the city.
Yes.
Well, if the city planning department doesn't wanna get back to us, I guess that's not our problem.
I just wanted to know if you had some pictures on the land that we could see, that we just get to this aerial photo and then we seem to quit lately, so I'm wanting to know what we got going.
Okay. Here's in front of the house. And here's the back, I believe these are the pillars, is that correct?
Back there and, pardon me? I said that's the road behind that we're talking about, okay? Right there is the road. There's a barbed wire fence that joins our property, then the road, then there's another barbed wire fence that fences off the Borgmeyer property, so that the road has got a barbed wire fence on both sides of it.
And these are the pillars for the.
That's where we'd like to put the pergola. There'd be four posts that would go up from there with the lattice across the top and then a light fixture.
Mr. Chair? I make a motion to approve this variance that you're requesting by the applicant with the four conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Just to clarify, the posts that are already there are the pillars?
Yes, they are.
Are they already within the distance that you're talking about, 50 feet from the right-of-way? the right of way?
They are.
So adding a structure on top of it wouldn't change much, would it?
No, no.
That would be about the furthest out it would go, isn't it?
Correct.
The pergola will overhang a little bit more into it, but slightly.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, item B.
Item B is a variance request thirteen fifteen for Dennis Cower. This is to reduce the minimum required lot size from forty acres to seventeen point five three eight acres and twenty acres in a general ag district. If the county board approves these lot size variances, staff would recommend that two conditions be attached. This is located along one hundred and fifty-fifth Avenue and a corner of Highway fourteen sixteen, just east of Box Elder. Currently, it's a, well, it's been platted through the city of Box Elder into two lots. It is within their three mile plating jurisdiction. This, we did contact Box Elder after we found out about this, and they indicated that they had routed it to Pennington County, but it never got to our office. At that time, we would have informed them that they would either have two options with these properties. Either rezone it to limited ag or go through the lot size variances. Both of those options were presented to the applicant. Property is currently zoned general ag district. General ag typically are, requires a minimum of forty acres. These are just under that, seventeen and twenty acres. There is a lot just to the south that also was created that is twenty acres that I believe also had a lot size variance. One of the lots is currently vacant. The other one has an older farmstead on it. They will be required to get a oper, operating permit for the onsite wastewater disposal system for this lot. I'll go back to that one. For this lot right here. This is the one that's currently vacant. The variance will allow for one additional residence to be built on this lot right here. If you approve this variance, we'd recommend that two conditions be attached.
I have a question for Dan.
Yes.
Dan, when you go, I'm looking at the map here on that property, and when you go to the west, I see there's a little, there's a small little corner further west than that.
Is there a bigger map? There you go.
All right.
This lot right here?
Yes. Has that got a variance on it as well? And does the one that is taken out of the middle of it, does it have a variance on it?
This one right here?
Well, if, that's a forty, where that small one is, and then the one that's right, right in the, connected to it.
I'm not sure on this one. PJ, did you research that, if there's a variance?
You think it is limited ag, that one?
Oh, no, the, this is the zoning map, so all these right here, this is all general ag. This is the zoning map.
So maybe it's time to start rezoning it to limited ag, which would then make those legal without a variance because we're piecemealing it right now.
That, that is a possibility, yes. This is a planned unit development down here. Through that PUD, they were allowed ten acre lots through the PUD process.
Yes.
Dan, what was the reason that the applicant may not have wanted to rezone it to limited ag instead of approaching the variance position?
Well, the two things that were, were talked about when he first came to our office was if it's rezoned, it's, yes, you're creating more of a spot zoning in this area. The other one is it does take three months in order to rezone the property.
So what is the hurry? I mean, is there a-
The property has been sold in an auction, so I believe he'd like to just get this cleared up as soon as possible so they can get building permits. You know, the lots are, are more or less legal because they can file a deeds on these properties. We just can't issue a building permit until the properties either have one or two things, rezoned to limited ag or get a lot size variance on each lot.
I guess I have to agree with, with Commissioner Holloway that it should be rezoned and not vary, variance everything. That's, it's the right thing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Dan, how much money does the applicant have, have into this right now, applying for the?
Three hundred and seventy dollars.
Three seventy?
Yep, plus the cost of mailing out letters to the neighbors at six dollars each, and I-
What's it costing to apply for a variance? Or not a variance, but a-
Rezone, three seventy.
And the same thing for the mailing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Cower if that's a possibility.
Commissioner, I'm Dennis Cower. Dan, I think I give you eleven hundred and seventy dollars.
Oh, that's correct because it was after the fact.
Eleven hundred and seventy dollars to do the application for the variance with the sign. You got any questions for me? I'd be more than happy to answer.
I would like Dan to explain the after the fact statement. What, what was after the fact about-
These lots were created in violation of our zoning ordinance, so anything that's done in violation of our zoning ordinance, they are required to pay double the fee plus the additional five hundred dollars.
How could a guy possibly be in violation of our zoning ordinance because we're the ones that authorize the zoning ordinances and the zoning of property? How, how, how did he be in violation of?
He just didn't come and do it. He went through Box Elder.
Section five, five eleven W, late charges, any owner of property upon which work has been done, for which a conditional use permit, variance, mining permit, plat, rezoning or planned unit development is required prior to issuance of said permit shall pay double the application fee plus a five hundred dollar penalty fee.
But, but how did it get that way in the first place? How did he, how was he in violation to get the property?
It was platted prior to the property being rezoned or a variance obtained.
How did he get it platted without coming through this?
It was platted through the city of Box Elder, is in their three mile plating jurisdiction.
And, and so they can plat without it meeting zoning regulations?
Correct.
So then how can we-
Boy, that's kind of a catch.
I went, I was told to go out to Box Elder because it was in the two mile radius of Box Elder, or three mile. So I went out there, made application, went through the whole process, got it platted, got surveyed and got it platted. Nobody ever told me that I had to get a variance or zoning because I was only going down to twenty acre parcels. Clear back last spring, I was thinking about giving my daughters each ten acre pieces of property, but I found out that I'd have to go through a zoning process because I was going to small increments of property. So through all the turmoil, the taxation thing, I decided to sell the property and held an auction, got a plat done and sold it. I was unaware of anything, that I was in violation of anything until I talked to Dan one day relinquishing my conditional use permit for my airstrip. That's when I found out I had to do something. So I went ahead and spent the money to do the variance. So that's where I'm at.
The city of Box Elder typically notifies us. I believe they are in transition at the time from one planning director to a new planning director. I don't know if that's the reason why they didn't at this time, but they did indicate they, and I did check with the new zoning director, they did notify Pennington County, but not our office. They noticed, notified equalization and register of deeds, but not planning and zoning.
So is the, is the Box Elder Planning Department the one that's really in violation then?
No, because they still, they can, and they can still file a plat with registered deeds without having-
Even though it violates the zoning regs?
Correct.
In terms of, of the situation, is there a reason for this being urgent, this action being urgent?
Well, I held an auction. Two different parties each bought one of the pieces of property, and I assume they'd like to go ahead. I've heard that the one party wants to build a horse shelter and the other one wants to utilize the property that has the buildings on it. I don't know whether they're going to build anything immediately, but the one piece of property definitely want to build something, but Dan says they can't issue a building permit until this is cleared up, so. And I don't want, I didn't want to lead them astray on anything, so I went ahead and spent the money to clear this up instead of just walking away from it because I was unaware at the time when I held the sale that I was in violation, so.
So, so Dan, if we, if we went through a rezone and rezone this to limited ag, what would the cost be associated with that?
It'd still be the eleven seventy because it's also after the fact.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I think that Mr. Cower, in good faith, did what he thought he was supposed to do, and it makes sense to me. I, I have a problem penalizing him for this.
Well, I, I do too, but I'm just wondering if we can't, if we can't stop going down the wrong path, get on the right path, take the money that he's already given the county and apply it towards handling this thing right.
That certainly is an option of the board to waive those fees and have him-
I have one question. The neighbors to the south, three or four years ago, got a variance on their piece of property to do what they did. I'd hate to think that this would be held against me where you've already given a variance on a twenty acre piece there, and this is in a light piece of property along the same road, so.
Part of the reason a person would want to start doing that is because we, it looks like that's, that's the route that this is going. If we reclassify this to limited ag, then other people that want to do the same thing that you did in Subdivide don't have to, or go through that plating through Box Elder, don't have to come in then and get a variance from us. If you start, appears to me like if we got a section of the county where we're all of a sudden issuing a bunch of variances, then maybe we got our zoning wrong in that area.
I, I agree with you, but I don't think I should be penalized at this point in time when I didn't know that I had to do that.
Well, I'm not trying to penalize you. I'm just trying to stop us going down the wrong path and get us on the right path.
For future development, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I may, I, I guess my concern is that we are putting the buyers in, in a holding pattern when perhaps they have interests that they'd like to pursue quicker than this process would take. And if granting this variance allows them to do that and, and proceed with whatever zoning requirements they might have, and then we step back and communicate, coordinate with Box Elder and say, let's get this whole area straightened out and move forward, that seems to me like the appropriate thing to do. And, you know, the fact that different entities of government, for whatever reason, kind of let you fall through the cracks, so to speak, you shouldn't be penalized for that.
I even, out at the Box Elder, at the council meeting, I met with the planning zoning man and I said, now what do I have to do to finish this? And he said, you do this, this and this. And I had to make the plat larger in size because the surveyor didn't do that correctly. I had to get the floodplain put in it, and there was one other item. And he says, then you're good to go. You're done. So that's what I was led to believe. I was very surprised when I met with Dan and he told me I had to do something else, so.
Education never stops, does it?
Never stops.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Cower, are the purchasers of the land here, the people that bought from here, are they here?
Yes.
Could we, could I hear from them or could we hear from them about what they have in mind, what the hurry up is of?
I'll tell you. You got it.
You need to-
Identify yourself, please.
I am Cindy Wasson.
You can pull that down.
I'm Eric Patterson.
I'm Cindy Wasson, and we just bought the property because we just wanted it for our horses and we were, I've talked to Mr. Peterson. All we wanted to do was put a lean-to or a barn on that property. And we've had great weather and we could have been started and probably had it done by now. And it's not Mr. Cower's fault. I mean, I think he did everything right. The papers that, I brought all our auction papers that we had. Everything said it was clear deed, no covenants.
You just want to build a horse shelter. How big is the horse shelter are we talking about?
Thirty by thirty and a ten by thirty-two foot run.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what you can do. You can build a hundred and forty-four square foot horse shelter side by side, a foot apart, and you can take care of that little problem. And you don't have to worry about all of this. Now, will that work?
That would work.
Don't talk to me anymore. What about the next gentleman?
Clarence Clever. We just plan on using it for our horses, small horse business.
Do you want to build anything on it?
Not at this point.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would somebody say something?
Place up and make it look a little better.
Just say something.
Utilize the correct.
That's good. Mr. Chair, I make a, I make a motion that we deny the variance without prejudice and transfer the three hundred and seventy dollars-
Eleven seventy.
Okay, but I'll get into the total, but we'll make it eleven seventy for, for giggles here. Eleven seventy back to the owner, and he pays the three hundred and seventy dollars to rezone the property and we go through the rezoning process.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have one question. Do I still have to get a conditional use to put up this lean-to or?
No, because if you're, if county, the way, if we want to play by the regulations, the regulations say that you can build a hundred and forty-four square foot building on your property as long as it's not affixed to the earth, and you don't have to get a building permit for it.
Well, that is correct. They don't need a building permit, but they would still have to meet the requirements of our zoning ordinance, and they're supposed to have a principal prior to an accessory.
Principal is a horse and it's an ag property.
If it stays general ag and forty acres.
I tell you, we're getting-
It's limited ag, they can't do that?
Not without having a principal there prior. Principal being a residence.
And I wasn't planning on putting a house up right away.
So if we change this, if we change this to limited ag, then they can't build a, a horse barn out there?
Without having a conditional use permit.
But they're going to build it before it goes to limited ag. It's already going to be ag by the time they get the thing built, and then they're-
Then they would have violation on the property.
What's going to be violation?
The accessory prior to the principal.
On the ag property? You mean you got to have a house on a piece of property in order to build a horse shelter on an ag property?
If it's general ag, they could do the ag buildings first.
But it is general ag right now, correct?
Yeah, but then to get it into limited ag, they would have to have the conditional use permit to make sure the property is all in compliance prior to it being rezoned.
It's going to take three months to rezone it, you said? So in that three month period, can they come in and apply for a building permit to build their horse barn out there?
No, because the property is in violation right now. It's not forty acres.
So can, can the commission make a special allowance?
Let's not, let's not start with special allowances. We've got rules and laws and regulations. We've got to obey them. If you don't like them, change them, but we're not making special allowances. That's crazy.
Okay, now we do have a motion and-
Mr. Cower, too.
Yeah.
Whatever we could do to change this now, if we're going to do it, and I mean, is she going to have to come in? If she wants to build a house, or what can we do now so we can improve the property and, and go about with whatever zoning you got to come up with? I don't know what it is, but I don't know what my long-term plans are, but I do know I want to improve the property as time goes along. But I do know I want to improve the property as time goes along. And he said he would like to try to work towards that goal.
And right now, the options are either get these lot size variances or rezone the property.
Okay, we've got a gentleman wishing to speak. Let's, let's hear from you.
My name is Wade Nyberg, and I'm the property owner to the south. We did, we didn't actually get the lot size variance. It was the, the neighbor we brought, we bought 20 acres from the neighbor. One of the conditions of that was that we deeded, we redeeded the whole thing together to make a 60 acre parcel. I guess what I would just like to say, I would rather see a variance here than, than a spot zone. I think that if you look at the, the map, it's a little deceiving just to look at the parcels. Because there's a, there's a whole row of 40 acre parcels to the west of there. But that's all one big pasture. It's the same owner. It, it's not really as, as divided as it looks by looking at that map. I think it really is, it's in, it's, yeah, on the west, there's a little lot that was carved out. That's the daughter of the owner of the, basically the surrounding property. He owns quite a bit of all those forties, that line of forties and on either side of that. So it, it does look like it's, it's sort of chopped up at this point. But it's, that's really just the parcels versus how the land's actually used. So I don't think zoning this to limited ag is really the answer. I'm a little frustrated by the process. I think Box Elder really dropped the ball on this one. I don't, I actually talked to him. We were, when I saw the, the auction notice, we were interested in it. At least, you know, wanted to, to follow up on it. And I knew from going through the process that we did the same thing a couple of years before. So I, I talked to the Box Elder Planning Department and asked them about it. And they knew, they knew of the zoning requirements. I talked to Dan about it. And I talked to the, the auctioneer about it too. And so.
You mean you talked to our, you talked to Dan in our planning department about the, it should be, problem that's, or?
Yeah, the.
Everybody knew?
The plating and the zoning, yeah. The issue with the Box Elder plats it, but it's county zoning and.
On this particular piece of property.
Yeah. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm against, against everything I stand for and to make a motion to approve the variance.
You're going to substitute motion?
I'll withdraw my motion.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn, has the second been withdrawn?
Yes.
Yes.
So now your motion does not have to be a substitute motion.
Now second his motion.
I, I, I think it should be rezoned also. But since we're, that just gets us into more and more problems. I think the planning and zoning department should flag this area. And we need to do something different with it.
Okay, we have a motion.
Before the next one comes around and we go through the same thing.
We have a motion and a second. Secretary, okay with the motion?
And Mr. Davis. Mr. Buskerud, would that also contain in that motion to give back his penalty?
Absolutely not. You can make a motion later on to do that.
With conditions?
With conditions.
Okay. Your motion included the two conditions.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Went around the barn and came out in the right place.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And Dan, I would advise you to advise Mr. Cower to come in and ask for his money back.
Do you need a motion to authorize that? Or can you, at your discretion, do so?
He can ask for it now.
Well, he can ask for it.
I think it should come back through the planning department.
I didn't come here to get any money back.
I'll second that motion.
Just leave it the way it is. I appreciate your vote to get this cleared up. I think you got a lot of work to do in the future to get things in an orderly manner. Because I'm sure he'd see somebody else get put in my position, so.
Thank you.
In line of that, I have talked with the new planning director for the city of Box Elder. And he is well aware that he needs to notify us of any plating they're doing within the three mile plating jurisdiction.
It is, just in the name of the afternoon public, is Mike McMahon gone from up there then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, item C.
Item C is a variance request 1316, Shiloh Farmer and Joanna Dale Soldado, Kent Guthrie as the agent. This is to reduce the section line setback requirement from 58 feet to 33 feet in a suburban residential district. If the board approves this variance request, staff would recommend three conditions be attached. So located at 13178 Morse Place, approximately six miles west of Rapid City along West Highway 44. Currently, it is a .46 acre parcel of land. He's redoing this and so he could rebuild the house that just recently burned down on the property. He's not rebuilding on the same foundation. He's actually building it a little further away from the section line setback than what the current house was built at. The existing house was built on the property in 1985. It was actually only 33 feet from the section line, but not in the right of way. As you can see, there's also two structures that are within the right of way, two smaller sheds. They have to be removed. One of those conditions is, is that they be removed from the property, are removed from, not the property, but from within the right of way.
PJ.
He would like to rebuild the new house on the property. In 1996, there was also another variance approved for this type of section, or section line setback on a neighboring property that was granted. There is a power line that goes through this section line. There's an easement. These sheds are also within that easement.
What kind of an easement?
For the power line. But it's also within the section line right of way.
Because all the power lines are overhead.
I'm sorry?
All the power lines are overhead.
Yes.
Good.
The lot size is limited, so this would allow for a much more buildable area on the property.
Mr. Chair, this is right behind my house. And I have absolutely no problem with it whatsoever. And I understand what the folks need to do to build a new home there after they lost their current home in the, during the blizzard. Caught fire, the fire department couldn't get to it. And frankly, the fire trucks were stuck in the middle of the hill, a hundred yards from it. So I think, I think they're doing a good job.
Any other comments or questions? Somebody needs to comment so Commissioner Davis can make the motion.
He just did. Thank you, I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anyone else wish to speak? Not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Need another motion now.
I'd move to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Motion in a second to come out of Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item D is the second reading of rezoning 1318 and comprehensive planning amendment 1312, Larry Tuber Schoolhouse LLC, Renner and Associates, the agent. Item E is first reading of public hearing of rezon 1319, James and Charlotte Still, Fist Land Serving as the agent. Item F is a minor plat, Allison Lewis. Item G is a minor plat, 1322 and subdivision regulation variance, Holy Smoke Inc., Danielle Banks, agent. Item H is a layout plat and subdivision regulation variance, 1312, Neil Teshetter, Fist Land Serving as the agent. Item I is a first reading and public hearing of rezoning 1315 and comprehensive planning amendment 1309, Neil Teshetter. And item J is a preliminary plat in 1323 and subdivision regulation variance, 1311, Grant Bolt. And item K is a first reading and public hearing of rezoning 1313 and comprehensive planning amendment 1307 for Mitch Morris.
Okay, does anyone wish any of the consent agenda items removed?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is read by the planning director.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, the planning and zoning consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye. Did anyone say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Item L is an appeal of a conditional use permit, 1319, for Ken and Corey Tomovic. This is to allow for events of 20 people or less and to allow for a vacation home rental in a general ag district. Planning Commission had approved this back in September with 20 conditions. It was appealed and was actually put on the September 27th. But however, the applicants couldn't attend. So it was continued to this meeting. And so here it is. This is actually located at 23632 Stradable, approximately one mile north of South Highway 16 and two miles northeast of Rockerville. Includes a .96 acre tract of land. They originally applied for a conditional use permit for the whole Stradable, their property, Bonanza Bar Realty, for wedding events up to 200 people. That they withdrew their application on that and then narrowed it down to just this portion of their property where there is an existing residence in a large open area behind the houses where they'd like to have the wedding areas, or wedding receptions. They have provided a site plan, providing adequate parking. It's, it's meeting all the requirements of our zoning ordinance. Planning Commission did approve it with 20 conditions with a minor change to condition number four, which was in regards to a online. They just said that they have a cell, that there be, make sure that they have cellphone service in the area. If you uphold the recommendation of Planning Commission, just need to state that you believe it is an appropriate use to the area, meeting the five criteria outlined in our zoning ordinance in our staff report, which also goes through those criteria. If you deny it, specify the reasons for denial. I know one of the major issues to this use on the property is the limited access. It is located on a dead end road. There's only one way in and out. That was some of the major discussion in the winding, turning road that goes down to the property. It was discussed at great length with that access and the emergency, getting people out in case of some type of emergency happening in the area. There are a number of letters in the packet in support and a number of letters also recommending that this not go through.
Okay, any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Step forward, state your name, please.
My name is Rich Huffman. I am an attorney. I represent Jeff and Roberta Roller, who appealed this decision. Dan, there are how many houses down at the bottom of this? Like five? Aren't most of them zoned suburban residential, not agriculture?
Some of them are, some of them marked. We do have a zoning map of the area.
Spot zoning, Dan?
It was done a while ago.
So?
This lot is zoned general ag. It is typical of a suburban residential lot. But it is a grandfathered lot as it was created prior to 1994. So it, all it has to do is meet the minimum required setbacks of 25 feet. And its allowed uses are those uses allowed in a general ag zoning district, which in this case would allow for a recreational resort type of use, which falls under the 20 people wedding reception area. They also have, part of this conditional use permit was for a vacation home rental, which is an allowed use in a general ag through a conditional use permit. In the appeal, they indicated they are not appealing the vacation home rental portion of the CUP, just the wedding reception area. And as far as number of homes in the area, that, yeah, there's four lots that are zoned suburban residential district. And two of the smaller lots are zoned general ag.
Okay, that answers the question. Would you proceed?
Yes, sir. I believe, my clients have lived at the bottom of this hill in one of the suburban residential lots, the house for 17 years. They bought this house and the quiet secluded neighborhood, taking the risk of the fire or anything that could happen that could prevent them from getting out. Because there's one way in and one way out. And at the bottom of the hill, it's very, very narrow. They, until two years ago, when you, I think it was two or three years ago when you adopted the vacation rental ordinances, traffic has started to pick up. And we realized that vacation rentals are the equivalent of somebody living in the house. I mean, if somebody's living in the house, they're going to come and go. But now, this is an application for recreation events. It is not limited to just weddings. It is any event. And what you're really doing, if you approve this, is you are going to allow business activity in a primarily suburban residential neighborhood. This is contrary to your suburban residential ordinances. Section 208 says suburban residential is to exclude uses which are not compatible with residential, but permitting uses that are particularly convenient to the residents. This isn't convenient to any of the residences. This is a business activity. Suburban residential also notice refers to neighborhood commercial. Well, neighborhood commercial is for uses that are primarily serving the neighborhood. This isn't serving any neighborhood. This is serving the business activities of the people at the bottom of the hill in a primarily suburban residential neighborhood. The applicants, the Tomovics, are already advertising their vacation rentals. They're, they've got, I mean, to my knowledge, stradable.com, stradable weddings, linkedin.com, Facebook, VRBO, homeway.com. And they are advertising for commercial activity. Would you want that activity 300 feet from your house in a, in a neighborhood in Rapid City or in the county? No, you wouldn't. Nobody would. I mean, and you wouldn't allow it in that situation. I mean, this is a, it's a, I believe, I believe that the planning department whiffed on this one, as did the commission. But that's why we're here and that's why you're here. The only way you can get a conditional use permit is you meet all of the conditions. The effect in use enjoyment of the other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted suburban residential and upon property values within the immediate vicinity. My clients own 40% of those, one house and one lot. This is going to affect them. This is going to affect them substantially. This is putting a business in the middle of a housing development. You're going to have fire danger. Anytime you add people, you add potential fire danger. And I think, I think that's, the fire department would, you'd agree with that one. More people, more potential for fire. And anytime you add people, there's more, more uses that are going to be contrary to the neighborhood. Dan had mentioned earlier, that, mentioned to me earlier that daycare is allowed. Well, daycare, sure, daycare could be allowed in an ag area. But there's no houses to serve daycare down there. So that's not, that doesn't make sense. Most houses in ag areas are how close together? Quarter mile, mile, two miles apart? Drive through the county? You're not seeing a house in an ag surrounded by other houses in ag. Because that's, oh, well, you, you do, but they're all family members. They're normally. They're normally related on one piece of property. This is going to have a substantial effect on this neighborhood. Is it going to affect the orderly development of the neighborhood? I say a yes. My clients have a vacant lot. Now, you think they're going to be able to build something on this vacant lot when they got business activity of an unknown nature that only has to turn off music by 10 o'clock at night? Doesn't say they have to be done by 10 o'clock at night. The condition is they just have to turn the music off by 10 o'clock at night. Okay. I get a little wound up, because I'm, I look at the other, the other rules for conditional use permit. Utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. How many, I just asked, how many of you driven down this road lately?
I didn't go this year.
I mean, pretty narrow down at the bottom. I mean, it's one way in, one way out. At some points, it's 16 feet wide, and when I looked at that 16 feet, it looked to me like four of that 16 feet was shoulder. I wouldn't want to put a tire on, so it's, it's a dangerous road, and I think everybody would agree with that. My clients have already been run off the road before there was any business activity and by the postman coming down the road. I don't, I don't know what this has to do with it, and I just found it, but when the Pennington County Commissioners adopted a resolution accepting the easement from the Forest Service on that portion of the road that's just on six, section 13, it said the road served rural residences. There's no mention, no mention of business activity. It appears they have enough parking if they only have 20 people. My, I guess my question would be, well, I don't have any questions on that, but it's still going to be crowded, it's the bottom of the hill. You would not allow a plat of a lot down there, because there's no turnaround and there's no fire hydrant. You can't, I mean, you couldn't get in and out. Fire department can't get down there. I mean, you just had a fire up the road in the, you had 120 feet and you had to run hoses that long? Do you guys have, doesn't that house burn down in neck yoke? You were quoted in the paper.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Danny out of this.
Oh, not yours? Okay. Well, they, yeah, there was a house burned down, they couldn't get, they couldn't get down there. There's no way you're going to get down to the bottom if there's a fire down there. And I'm also sure my clients are going to be able to get out if there's a fire at the top, but they accepted that risk based on the minimum amount of activity that was in the area.
We put all kinds of power.
Okay. In closing, the last item is that the measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting. The planning department just made the blanket statement that said, by the very nature of this limited activity, this should be supported. Well, this limited activity is mall hours of the day till 10 o'clock at night. It's receptions, not just weddings. I can't agree. I'm one of the owners of the Red Rock Golf Course. We could have activities at the golf club seven nights a week, but the voices at Red Rock Golf Club carry 1,000 feet across that valley, and so we don't. We stop everything, we try and stop everything by nine, and we just don't let them have more than one, because the neighbors are going to be up in arms. I mean, so I've dealt with this situation personally. I've been called in the middle of the night saying, what do we do? I'm getting called, called by the neighbors. I said, shut it down, make it quiet. Those are my reasons. I don't think they, you legally have the facts upon which a conditional use permit can be granted. This is completely against your suburban residential zoning, which everything else down there is. And I don't, I don't even know what liability the county would be undertaking by authorizing a business activity at the end of this road. That kind of scares me. And the Rollers, having purchased this property 17 years ago and hadn't, had no business activity till vacation rentals started, have some property rights too, and they have the right to be able to reside in a suburban residential area under the rules of a suburban residential area without opening it up to business. I'm here to answer any questions. I would ask Roberta Roller to just make a couple statements about her living at the bottom of that road, if she may.
Before you sit down, which, which lot is your, your client?
If I blow this, Robert, I, these two.
Are your clients?
Are my clients, right?
And the, and the TomaX property then is across, just across that road?
Right there.
Right there.
These are, these are other suburban, these are suburban residential zoning. The rest of this is all ag or Forest Service, and there's a couple pre-existing lots that are ag, but this is the location.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, go ahead. You are?
Roberta Roller. I live at 23636 Stradable Road, just across the road from the Tomovic property that they're requesting the conditional use permit on. One of the things that concerns me is the fire evacuation plan. It talks about how if they smell smoke in the air or there's imminent weather, that they will not hold the event or they will get people out of there. And it doesn't talk of what if one of these events happens, you know, a fire happens right down there on the property? And that's, you know, where you have a real great risk of the fire department. Are they going to want to bring their equipment and endanger their people? How are we going to get the people that are there out when it's a one-way, you know, dead end road? And if the fire's on that side of it, there's no way to get out. I've hiked down the creek, you know, when I was younger, and I could barely do it then, so I can't imagine anyone, you know, being able to get out down the creek. And, you know, they're going to meet up at Reptile Gardens and do a head count. That's quite a jaunt away, so. One thing we have seen since Ken and Corey started publicizing the area is a material increase in road traffic, and that's in the conditional use, conditions, that it not have a material increase on road traffic. Parts of the road here are not being shown, you know, the blinding curves, which is where I went in the ditch once, got run off the road by the postman on a blind corner. You know, we just both came around and it's one lane at best, and, and there was just no way that we could both get through at the same time. Another thing that it doesn't show is there's a 400-foot cliff around the area, and that's, the Stradable sits down in the bottom and the cliff is surrounding, and we're all down in that echo chamber. And you hear every car that comes and goes, every corridor that slams, let alone, you know, festivities in the backyard. We're going to hear all of that, and, you know, maybe we're going to want to mow our yard. Are we not going to be able to, because, you know, we're going to interrupt somebody's wedding? Who wants to do that? I don't want to be that person, you know, but yet I have a right to do what I want when I have my time at my house, so. When we bought our property, it was suburban residential, and it continues to be today. We never expected to have a business right across the road from us, and we don't feel like the area is suitable for commercial property or, you know, commercial use of any sort, so that's why we appeal it, for all the reasons, I guess, that Rich stated and myself too. And I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I guess this may be more for Dan and then maybe for you, Roberta. What do we consider material increase? Because, you know, there, it's a different definition, probably. I just wonder if we could figure out what the material increase is.
When I review a conditional use permit, I try to look at what would the uses be compared to if there were people living in each and every house and a family were in there, which is an allowed use in this area, and try to make somewhat of a comparison. And I imagine, yeah, traffic is going to increase during that wedding event, but I feel it's minimal. That's what I felt, it was minimal compared to if there were families living in each and every house in that area.
And for you, Roberta?
Well, I disagree with that, because it already has seen a material increase, and that being, when you have an event, it's just not the day of the event that you see the people come and go for a series of time. It's, they're coming down to check out the place. Everybody that comes to the event to visit from out of town, they go check it out, make sure they know where they're going, you know, so they're not leaving it until the day. You're seeing photographers, cake people, I mean, you name it. Events have a lot of people catering. In fact, we had one truck that was a larger truck, and I was trying to remember what the-
Porta potty.
Oh, yeah, the porta potty truck was coming down the road, and I mean, there was no room for us. We had to get over to the side and let him go by, and, you know, he was on a mission, just like the garbage truck when he comes down there on a schedule, you know? So there is material increases, you know? We used to get maybe one or two vehicles on the weekend, if even that, and now I would say it's tenfold that we're seeing people night and day that we never saw down there before, so. Okay? Any other questions?
I have a question for Dan.
Yes.
Dan, the property where, I mean, it's just this kind of a triangular lot, I guess. Where would the weddings actually take place? Where are they saying that the weddings are going to take place?
I believe-
And then where would the, where would the 18 by 90-foot parking lot be?
Well, they're putting parking, this is the residence right here that's on the property. They got parking along the driveway in here, and they had some additional parking in this area.
Is it gravel parking or parking lot, or what?
I believe this is paved, and then they have some gravelled areas in this area.
Because you're calling for nine, or no, 10 parking spaces, nine feet wide and 18 feet deep. So that's 90 foot, 90 by 18 for the parking. You don't care if it's all in one spot, though?
No, it doesn't have to be in one spot.
And the vacation rental home that's already approved under CUP, where's that at?
This is the residence right here. That's the vacation-
That's the vacation rental home?
Well, that's part of this application. There's also an additional one go out to the other site plan. This is also a vacation home rental, which was approved about a year, year and a half ago.
And where's the parking for that vacation rental home?
Oh, up in the residence area itself.
Okay.
Now, go back to the other picture. The wedding reception areas, this is a large flat area down by the creek. There's a large rock in this area. The reception areas would be down, what I've been told, in this area in here.
Would they be able to put a tent up and have a reception down in there?
Yes, they could.
Under this provision?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions. Okay, do we have anyone else who wishes to testify? Let's, anyone else supporting the appeal? If not, okay.
I go down there and see Jeff and Roberta once in a while, but-
Your name?
Ken Deers. And if you go in that one picture where that real hairpin corners are, that's where the danger's at. I mean, it is. That's one of them. And then the next one around from there and going in, if you look on the map, but you'd almost have to improve the road somehow. If you're, I just have a hard time right there, right above the meter mark. And those places there, some of the areas aren't too bad, but those hairpin corners and if you have an event there, it's bad enough just going down there by yourself. It's just, it's just a nasty area. I don't know if you can improve the road or something like that, but this is, I'd be really concerned about even going down there. I mean, if you've driven, have you driven that road?
I haven't.
It'd be good for you to do it, and then thinking about a business down there, it's just not a, it's just not a place for it, really. It's a serene, beautiful place, but it's a beautiful place for a wedding also, but still, you've got to make it safe for everybody, I think, to, to be able to allow something like that. It's just not, at this time, I wouldn't see it being a good viable thing. That's all I got to say about it.
Any questions?
Questions?
Okay, anyone else supporting the appeal?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am.
What would you like to say?
Well, when we look at what Dan has written, it says, "This conditional use permit could have long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate That's enough right there, isn't it? But what really gets me, and I think we've seen it before on vacation rental homes, is that they're already doing it. They haven't got permission, but they're already advertising it. In fact, there's letters from, their attorney says, "The moving accounts of those who have been fortunate enough to have their weddings take place in this location speak for themselves, and they should be able to continue to provide this service." They're already doing it. Got a letter from somebody that had their family visiting from Boston and Canada and US and Hawaii, and they had theirs down there. Beautiful place to have it, which I'm sure it was, because I was down there the other day. And with the understanding that the Tomovics were granted permission by the county commission to hold our wedding on the property. I would like to see that permission when that happened. I'm not sure it ever happened. I could be wrong, but I don't know how we could have. Let's see, what else? I was down there the other day on the road, and I'll tell you what, it scared me to drive down, because it was frosty and it's steep and curvy and narrow, and there's a pretty good drop-off on some of it. Bad road. It just, we, we keep granting businesses in the middle of residential areas, and here we go again. We're going to do it again. It's not good enough just to have a vacation rental home. Now we've got to rent it out for weddings, which is, that sounds pretty. It's also probably going to be renting it out for reunions, for prom parties, for anything else that they can rent it for. And how often? Well, any Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so maybe once a year, maybe once a week. It's hard to tell. I just can't see allowing more businesses. It's such a nice tranquil area, and we're going to allow a business down there. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll let the, are you speaking? Which, which side? Try to, try to allow equal time for opposing parties. So what?
I'm here for Jeff and Roberta Roller. First, I'd like to say there is no cellphone service down there. Any storm that comes along, this last storm closed down that road. There is several areas in there where the fire department could get a larger truck down in there along with a, a small automobile, but the majority of that road, there is, isn't that much access to, and it will also be disrupted to all the wildlife and stuff down in the bowl.
Okay, any questions for? Okay, we've heard one side.
My name's Mike Los. I represent Ken and Corey Tomovic. Appreciate the opportunity to appear before you today. Mr. Huffman spoke of the, this commission not having the facts, and I certainly would respectfully disagree. The facts that I think are important for your consideration are that my client's property is zoned general agriculture, that this conditional use permit is entirely consistent with their zoning. In fact, the conditional use permit is consistent with the vast majority of property from Highway 16 down to the Stradable. I mean- I mean, I think it's a real stretch to call this a residential area. With due respect, Mr. Burskoud, we've got, the great majority of the land is actually general agricultural. And I believe that the commission can feel good about the staff's work on this, on this CUP, that the process worked, that there was a significant amount of opportunity to vet all of the issues that have been addressed. And I think one of the facts that need to be considered is that Mr. Gordon, who is here today, has had an opportunity to look at this. The process worked in that there was some back and forth on the evacuation plan, and now there's a plan in place, a part of the conditions that Mr. Gordon and the folks at the Rockerville Volunteer Fire Department can live with. So, the facts are, the people that are experts, that you can rely upon to guide you in these kinds of decisions are supportive. This is, by most definitions, not a residential area, and I believe that the twenty separate conditions attached to the CUP that my client agrees to completely really do serve to balance everybody's rights in this situation. Everybody's, my client's property rights as well as the Roller's. I think another fact that the commission can consider is that, other than the Roller's, there is support for the CUP among the neighbors. Now, granted, there are not a great number of neighbors. This isn't a, you know, a forty-to-one deal. That's why it really is a stretch to say that this is a, in any way, a residential The process worked, the vetting was very, very well done. If we could go to the photo that shows the, the overhead, and one of the questions from Mr. Holloway was where, where would it take place? And so, this is actually an elevation, as you'd expect, since it's by the creek, that's lower than here, and fairly significantly lower than the Roller's property. So, in addition to the distance, we've got, you know, sort of some natural breaks, including visually, this literally cannot be seen, this cannot be seen from the front yard, let alone property over here. It's important to, that we're precise in our terms. I mean, the idea that this is a business, this twenty-person-or-less wedding, and granted, it could be receptions of other kinds, you know, we're talking about temporary situations. If there was a structure, obviously, it'd be temporary. This is not going to change the character of the land. It's not going to decrease anybody's property values, and for somebody to simply just say that it will is not a fact. It's an opinion, but it's not a fact. And I think it's inconsistent with common sense to think that a temporary use on a very limited and very controlled basis is going to have any effect whatsoever on the property values. Don, if you were down this weekend on the road, I think it's, I think even the Roller's would admit that this is about as bad as the road can look, given the storm damage from October. I think there are, the county's already in the works of having some maintenance done because largely throughout the year, the road is fine. People are coming in and out of there every day. As far as I know, there's not been any reported accidents. I think anecdotally, there's been some folks that have been off the road, or have a tire off the road, or need to get, but I think if there was a real problem with this road and accidents, you'd know about it. And certainly, the highway, the county highway folks would know about it. And as far as I know, the fact is that there's not a single reported accident that they're aware of. It doesn't mean that folks haven't been off the road. Of course, people are off the road on Jackson Boulevard and Sheridan Lake Road, and to the testimony regarding the storm that closed the road, I mean, that storm closed every road. It certainly wasn't unique to Strata Bowl, Strata Bowl Road. When you consider the fact that the letters for and against regarding the road, I mean, so you fight those to a draw. There's been a lot of folks down there that have had no issues whatsoever, and other folks will say there's great danger. I think at that point, the commission is fair to rely upon the experts, Mr. Gordon, the highway people at the county, the Rockerville Volunteer Fire Department. You know, if anecdotally, we fight the road issue to a draw, I think you can rely upon the experts, including Mr. Jennison and his staff, to look at these things. They looked at all five. I think it's a thoughtful report. I think it balances everything, and again, finally, one of the conditions is this is reviewed on a year or a complaint basis. So, what we, as we sit here this morning and talk about hypothetical and potential harm and opinions about things, we will know with greater certainty when the, when the CUP is reviewed, as mandated by the conditions. And I think that would be a fair way to proceed. These are not, these people are not new to this kind of hosting. And Mr. Burskoud, what I think was reflected in the letter in support was a, an event, one of the three that's allowed without a CUP for the year. I don't believe this body has ever had to rule on, on an event. I think the only events that have ever taken place, and Dan can correct me if I'm wrong, are those that would be permitted basically without permit. Three events or less. That's my understanding. But I think you're correct. You haven't had to rule on those, on those issues. Corey, please.
The three-event thing, that is correct. As far as the advertising, the house that's, that one, that lot, we are not advertising that house, yet. We are hoping to be able to advertise it at the end of December for the 2014 year.
They have a, they own a separate rental house. That's what's being promoted.
That's what's being promoted, and it's vrbo.com, I think, is, and we also have strata bowl.com for the rental house, too, and on the Strata Bowl weddings. That was when I, when we originally put a CUP in here, it, I, I think there's a great fear about this, and that there's going to be a overwhelming business run over the property and everything else. What I was originally asking was for six to eight weddings over the course of five, five months, and that was 200 people with, but now, I listened to the neighbors, and I said, "Okay, I get it, and I, we won't do that. We'll gear it way down and just have 20 people or less." And, and that's what the deal is. I, I have, our family has had a history of sharing this property since 1935, not only with the community, but with the world. And there were thousands of people in 1935 around that rim, and in the Strata Bowl, and everywhere, and there, but that's a different topic. I'm not, this is about 20 people or less, and is it going to happen every day of the week? Well, I don't think that's even possible. I don't think that's the market for weddings in the Black Hills. I think primarily, people get married on a Saturday, or maybe a Friday or a Sunday. And, but are we going to be overrun? And I don't think that's possible. So, any other questions? I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Where do you live at? Which one of those houses do you live in?
Right there, and there is also the question about Ag, Ag District. This is an Ag District, and so is this one. These were the first two houses built down there.
Okay. So, so, and the house back behind you is already a vacation rental home?
Yes, it is.
And now you're applying for a vacation rental home in this other one, too?
Yes.
Where would the, where will the parking for the events take place? Are you figuring on building a parking lot, or what?
There are a few spaces in the paved driveway, and there's a gravelled area next to the woodshed, and it's about right there. And then there's the county road, the dead-ended county road is right there. And then it comes around, and we would put a few parking areas right here.
So, is that a private road, then?
It's been, I don't remember, it was right after the flood happened in 1972. That road used to go through all the way to Sheridan Lake Road, and we petitioned it to go back to forest, and it wasn't rebuilt. So, that's where it was. It's on Bonanza Bar Realty.
Since, I was down there the other day, and I've never been down to the Strata Bowl before. Where's the Strata Bowl?
It's the big field.
The big field off to the right there? Could you go down?
Yes.
That's where all the blooms go.
That's cool.
Don, would you mind if I approached? I think I can answer your question.
Yeah, that's it.
So, this is the front of the house.
Yep.
Okay? These would be parking, and then this continues back behind the house, and that would be parking along that road.
I've got another question.
Yep.
And, and the other, I was, I had another statement. I, people, that wedding that Amy wrote that letter, she and her fiance were walking up on the rim, and they saw it, and they just drove down and asked us if they could have their wedding down there, and that's, that was before, you know, there was even, so we've always said, "Sure." I mean, because personally, I have a philosophy of sharing, because that's the way I was raised, to be part of a community and to actually, we haven't made any money on weddings yet. And I don't know, it's just a different philosophy. So, anyway, any other questions?
Commissioner, but-
I do, I have a question, for my information more than it really affects this. A few years back, the National Landmark Association wanted to come down there and put a plaque up, and they weren't given permission to do that.
Correct. That, what year was that?
Oh, nine.
Oh, nine?
Lynn, can you introduce yourself?
Okay. I'm Lynn Tomavick Lovridge. And that was, the National Park Service has designated, or recommended, that that field be designated as a national historic landmark. It was voted not to. The Roller's got two votes, and Bonanza Bar Realty got one, the Forest Service got one. Forest Service abstained, so it is not a national historic landmark. And in fact, at that time, we hadn't really researched it enough to know if it was going to be, have a huge impact or not. And personally, and this is Corey Tomavick speaking, I am not speaking for Bonanza Bar Realty, and I am not, I am speaking from myself as a shareholder in Bonanza Bar, but also as the secretary, not, not as Bonanza Bar, Corey Tomavick. I personally feel that it is a historical site. But that is not this topic, and that is down the road if, if we have any decision to do that.
No, it's not this topic, except it may be if the reason for not allowing it is that the road's dunk, which it does. That's what I was getting at.
Yeah. When I talked to Hank Crowley, Spearfish, he has his property as a national historic landmark. He said there has been no impact to the public coming on the property. There's been no increase, but you know what? I also looked at a couple other ones, and there was no increase, but-
I can see, from being down there, where you wouldn't want a whole bunch of traffic. I appreciate that.
Thank you for your comments.
Anyone else?
I'm Lynn Tomavick Lovridge. I've been down in the Strata Bowl since the eighties. It's been my family's place for years, and I support this for generations to come. The house, yeah, it's my grandma's house. It used to be my great-grandpa's house, and-
You were married there?
Yeah, but-
Where do you live, man? Do you live down there now?
I don't live there now, but I go down there often. Many years as a teenager, we've been there while there have been fires, and we have been evacuated, and multiple times. We've never approached any oncoming fire trucks, or, I mean, it's, yeah.
Lynn is also a shareholder in Bonanza Bar Realty, the company that owns the real estate that is the Strata Bowl, and as an entity, is supportive of the CUP. Certainly, the great percentage of land ownership there is in Bonanza Bar Realty, who is in support of the CUP. Thank you, again.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Jay, in terms of the appeal, what, what's the appropriate action or official procedure here?
And I do have one question, Mr. Chairman, one you can-
Yes, okay.
Have you looked at the easement that we have concerning the road from the Forest Service, where it says easement should be granted for rural residents, if that's what Mr. Huffman says it says?
That was the commissioner's resolution accepting the Forest Service easement.
Have you looked at the Forest Service easement?
But it was a grant of about eight block, and I didn't see, I didn't, I mean, honestly, I didn't see any reservations in it, but it's a typical government document that goes about four pages, it makes no sense.
Just like all the rest of the government, huh?
Including the one you're looking at.
Any other comments before Jay? Not, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Alderman with the State Attorney's Office. In the, it's fairly straightforward. The process itself can be difficult, but your options are pretty straightforward. The county board shall vote to uphold, overrule, or amend the decision of the planning commission. Three options. So, you can uphold it, you can deny it, or you can uphold it and add your own conditions. There's already 20. You could make it 30, or you could make it 17. You can, it says you can amend it.
Any comments, Dan?
Well-
Thank you, Jay.
The appeal did not appeal the vacation home rental portion of the conditional use permit, just the wedding reception portion of the CUP.
Just, just to clarify and make sure we understand, the basis for the appeal is the fact that this was granted by the commission, or not granted?
Oh, it was granted by the planning commission with those 20 conditions. If you deny the portion of the wedding reception area, that would remove condition number one. The other ones, you know, are probably condition number seven regarding the parking area, and the other ones could apply to a vacation home rental, but we typically don't put those on a VHR CUP, but they could apply.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to Jay now, just, and maybe I'm the only one that wants to be sure about this, but if we decided to grant these privileges or uses, whichever you want to call them, and the appeal is to reverse that, or a portion of it, then the motion to uphold, is that a motion to uphold the appeal or uphold the previous decision?
It's the decision. The planning commission granted the conditional use permit with 20 conditions.
Correct.
If you did nothing more than, say, affirmed, then you are agreeing with and maintaining the status of their decision, because it's their decision that is before you on appeal. So, you could affirm it as is, you could deny it as is, or you could affirm it with some conditions of your own.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, pull the appeal and deny the decision of the Planning Commission.
Is there a second? Died for a lack of a second.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to affirm the Planning and Zoning Commission's action.
Is there a second? I'll second it so we can discuss it.
Um, Mr. Chair, I, I was not for the, um, two hundred people. I felt that was way too many people going up and down and being there. And that it was dangerous with that many people. But I, I think I can see twenty people. And the other part of this is that certainly, there's a distance there for the Rollers' property, but if it's an issue, you come in and see us and it's brought forward. And, and we've had these sort of things before with this kind of location and we've not had complaints. So I guess that's just, it, it's not that you do not have a recourse for this and I, and I can go along with a smaller amount of people at those events.
Good morning, Denny Gordon County Fire. There's been a number of comments this morning made about fire departments and fire protection and stuff, so I thought I'd at least need maybe make sure I set the record straight here. First of all, this is in the Rockerville Volunteer Fire Department's Protection Area. That's when the two hundred request came in, we met with, uh, the landowners, the Rollers and, and Tomovics down there, and I think we all had large concerns with, with that many people. That was pulled and went down to twenty. Uh, with the Rockerville Fire Department, Paul Smith is the Fire Chief and his Assistant Fire Chief, we came up with a fire evacuation plan. Is it absolutely perfect? Probably not. The Tomovics have some responsibility in that, that they need to monitor the fire conditions and the weather and, uh, if there's any fires in the area. We also shoulder, and I say we, I mean the Fire Service, we also shoulder some responsibility in there that if there is a fire anywhere within, uh, up to a mile, we're gonna come and tell them, you need to evacuate. Now, when you tell people to evacuate, you need to tell them someplace to meet. We decided that the Reptile Gardens parking lot was a nice big area, those people need to go somewhere. You can't just say, get out of here and leave. So, we picked the Reptile Gardens parking lot. I heard comments that the Fire Department doesn't want to come, that the Fire Department can't get down there, entirely incorrect. The Rockerville Fire Department can get down there. That, um, the twenty people isn't much more than a family reunion and we have those all over the hills. You must remember also that in about mid-September, and I think it's one of those three planned events or something that they can have, is there's a balloon rally down there, great event. Approximately fifty people is what I've been told, probably eight or ten balloons. And every one of those balloons has a propane burner to warm it up, okay? This is held in mid-September, right after a summer, hopefully that was wet, sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't. So, um, County Fire doesn't have any issues one way or the other, but I just wanted to make sure I set the record straight, that we have been involved in this process all along, so, and we're, we're agreeable to the evacuation plan.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote.
Busford?
No.
Davis?
I'll yield for a moment. I'm still contemplating.
Holloway?
I'd like to yield just to see what he does.
You'll, you'll find out in just short order.
Let's see now.
We have two yields, one no.
Traubman?
Yes.
Yerson?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
See, didn't take you long to find out, did it?
Motion carried. Okay, the next item is item M.
This is a discussion of the resumé of the Donald General Variance. The applicants have withdrawn their request.
Okay, you want to repeat that? We had a little background noise here.
Okay, I'm sorry. The applicants have withdrawn their request.
So...
They have indicated they will meet the parking requirement of our zoning ordinance.
So there's no, no...
No need for a variance.
Is that right? We don't have to act?
No.
Okay. Okay, the next...
We're still gonna have the issue of the stacking room.
Just a second before we go on to this next one. Dan, just for my knowledge, um, what does this county regulation say on size of land? Ag land or septic tanks will be pumped? Is that, is that a must be forty acres or is it just zone, ag land is zoned ag?
It's, I'd have to read it through the ordinance.
Because if it's what I think it is, we'll have to back up.
Forty acres and unplanted. Brittany has that...
No, I don't. It's a waste.
Oh, you do.
Are you sure?
We don't back up. We don't have reversals.
We might have to.
To qualify for the exemption, the following criteria must be met. The land consists of not less than forty acres of unplatted land.
Not less than forty acres of unplatted land.
Correct.
Gotcha. That's all I needed to know. Cause, uh, one, we did a little bit ago, wasn't quite forty acres, but it was still zoned ag, but there was a stipulation there to do the septic tank and I just wanted to make sure we did the right thing. Okay, anything further for Planning and Zoning? If not, the next item is items from the Chair and I would like to introduce Michael Bishand, who is a City Councilman in Sturgis, South Dakota. Welcome, Michael.
I'm just Chair of Burberry. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
I have no pronouncements or announcements, so we'll move to committee reports.
Mr. Chair, I'd be glad to do, do that. First of all, Pam Teller, the Assistant Director of the Central State Fair, was nominated last week in Casper for Fair Person of the Year for the Rocky Mountain District. So that was quite an honor to Pam and, uh, they gave her a belt buckle that was way too big for her, she can't hardly carry it. Uh, but, uh, and the next thing off is that, uh, the Chairman and I appeared at the, uh, as Representatives of Pennington County, at the Veterans Day Parade at, uh, here in Rapid City and we participated in the parade. And, uh, we let the rest of the Commissioners know that we would do that. And, uh, I didn't think we had to ask anybody else for permission to go to that, uh, that parade and honor our veterans that have so adeptly protected our backside over the years. And I also mentioned a couple of times to some of the fellow folks who were there, the National Guard guys who were there, probably fifty, sixty of them. And I reminded them that someone called them draft dodgers a year or so ago at the Veterans Day Parade. And, um, that gentleman is sitting in the back of the room and I just wondered if he wanted to bring that same statement up again this year after we know that there's four thousand National Guard troops killed in Afghanistan and Iraq. And, uh, they said that they would like to know who that person was. And I said, well, you can get on the county website and find it. That's, uh, kind of the end of my story.
Mr. Busford?
Wow, that's a hard act to follow. Not really. Uh, I went to a, uh, Council on Aging meeting and they basically just wanted to thank the Commission for continued support. They can always use the money. Uh, and at the meeting, uh, Don Kennedy, former City Councilman, uh, who is the President of the Council on Aging, wanted me to attend the, uh, meeting tomorrow of the Downtown Kiwanis Club and do a quick speech on county, uh, government. So I will be doing that. If you're interested, I can give you a copy of my notes. I haven't written it yet. So anyway, uh, that's about all.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chair.
What?
I don't have anything.
Um, I attended the, uh, oh, I, I guess I don't know, I can't think of what you call it, but it was where Kristi Noem invited Chief Tidwell from U.S. Forest Service to come out and, uh, tour the area, visit with, uh, people who are involved in the mountain pine beetle and forestry issues. Um, there were some, I, I, I felt really good, um, good points that he brought up. And one of the things that I found encouraging is that he said the social acceptance of actually managing our forests is much more positive than it used to be. And they are having less problems with lawsuits whenever they try to sell a timber, to make a timber sale or to do some thinning and so on. He said it's, it's becoming a little easier for them to actually manage a forest and they are going ahead with that. The other thing that is really benefi, or, uh, is, is something that we should be proud of in our area is that he recognized the collaborative efforts that are going on for that mountain pine beetle. There, there's just no other place in the United States that has done what we have done. And certainly, we're going, we are being held up in the way we have come together different entities to do something about our forest issues. He, they are using our, our example to show other communities how they can actually work together too. And, and that's a pretty big deal for our area. And, and I guess I would, I'm really pleased that Pennington County chose to do that. It, it was an interesting, it was just very interesting to hear him speak and, um, certainly, I, he was impressed with our area and it, that says a lot about what we've done with forest issues.
Anything else?
No, that's the big deal.
Well, then, I will point out that Commissioner Troutman was featured as the, uh, Commissioner of the Month or whatever in the state magazine. Nice profile on, on her service as a Commissioner and would encourage you to read it, she might even autograph your copy.
But I would like a red Mustang if anybody...
Okay. Any other committee reports? Not, next item is items from the public. State your name, please.
Thank you. My name is Haven Stock and I'm here, uh, on behalf of myself, but also, uh, looking at other properties similarly situated. And my suggestion to the county as to an amendment to the, uh, Pennington County zoning ordinance, uh, the particular provision that Brittany just read, and that is the, uh, the wording right now on page fifty-one, uh, provides for an exemption to the permit when the land consists of not less than forty acres of unplatted land. Uh, I think there's a valid reason for the forty acres. I don't think, however, that the, that whether it's platted or unplatted really makes any difference in the, uh, in the, uh, purpose for the statute. I didn't really want to be here for myself, but I think my particular situation does, is a good example of what we're speaking to. I think possibly this was emailed to the, uh, the Commissioners, at least I received a copy of it. Uh, I, uh, my particular property is a platted seventy-three acre lot. Uh, and I guess my point here is I don't think that there's any difference between the platted and the unplatted for the purpose of the ordinance and that is to, to look at less developed properties. And in my particular case, I have quite a few more acres than the, than the minimum required of forty. Uh, my suggestion for the amendment to the ordinance would be to strike the words, uh, "of unplatted land" and have the exemption then applied to, uh, all lots or properties of forty acres or more. And I would like to compliment Dan and, uh, and Brittany and Kelsey, the staff at the Planning and Zoning, I think they do an excellent job and, and many times gets to be, uh, a difficult situation. So again, my suggestion is to remove those words, "unplatted land," make the ordinance apply to, or the exemption apply to properties of forty acres or, uh, more. Appreciate the consideration of the Commissioners in that, uh, recommendation.
Mr. Chair, uh, Haven, I, I, first sentence, I'd have to totally agree with you. Second sentence, you're always sitting over the top of the recharge okafer and I got a real problem with that one. Uh, so I don't know just where to go with this. Uh, my philosophy's always been, since the county decided to put in the septic tank ordinance, there shouldn't have been any exemptions. But they did, uh, and I wasn't part of the, that wrote that, um, so why they exempt the forty acre parcels, the only, the only thing I can come up with is because of the property out east on the prairie, the wall, the tough area. But still, my philosophy is if you're polluting the soil and polluting the water, you're polluting, I don't care how many acres you're on. And so we should either take it completely off or put it completely on, one or the other.
And that's, partly what I'm here to say is that it ought to be the same. It doesn't matter whether it's platted or unplatted and, you know, you're certainly, uh, can discuss the acreage requirement and that's, that's a different thing. But in my, my point is just that it ought to be this, the properties ought to be treated the same for a particular number of required acres.
Okay. Appreciate your comments and the notation on our items from the public. It says the Board takes the time to listen and consider, but not to comment. So, at this point, you, you had the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And at this point, there will be no further comment from the Board.
I wasn't going to comment, but I guess I probably should. I don't know who the individual was being referred to, uh, presumably it was me. Those of us my age, about fifty-eight thousand people my age were KIA or MIA from Vietnam. And I could be corrected, but I heard somebody a little while ago say that, I'd get the record straight and, and maybe I have the wrong record. But if any, if any of those fifty-eight thousand plus during the Vietnam era were Army National Guard, I'd like to know it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I can't comment, so, but I sure will after this. You are commenting and I will not accept that. Okay, we have, um, the next item on the agenda was an executive session and we have no need for that, so if someone is creative, we can, I'll accept another motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.